Okay, let me start this again. Just in case you're curious as to the people that are attending the meeting that are wondering, how is this meeting even taking place? Everybody.
There he is.
Everybody on, almost everybody, oh, no, it does appear as if everybody on the Prose Commission is attending today's meeting.
Wow.
No.
And I don't, I assume that I'm correct on this. I, I, no, this looks like.
It's like.
This actually looks like the people that attended the recent prose meeting, more than the people that are attending our meeting.
Wow.
This is.
Well, it's pretty bizarre, but.
Okay, hold on, let me. My apologies. Okay, here we go. Okay. Fortunately, now there are actually only five people that are watching this calamity occurring.
That's us.
My, well, I hope everybody is in good humor, and my apologies for what's going on. Okay. Mr. Calderwood will no doubt have something of great humor to contribute, either during our meeting or somewhere online, so. Let me go ahead if we don't mind, it's 3:07. And I am calling this meeting to order. So just to let you know, in addition to those of us that are on the Policy Committee, the attendees are Christine Heinrichs, Mr. David Pearson, Board President Don Howe, troublemaker Michael Calderwood, and a phone number that I'm not familiar with. So, calling the meeting to order and establishing a quorum. Do we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports? Anybody have anything? No. Chair report? I do not have a chair report. There was something on my mind this morning, but it seems to have vacated the premises between my ears. Do we have any committee member communications? Hearing none, let me move on to public comment. Do we have anyone that wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none.
Wait a minute.
Oh, Christine Heinrichs just raised her hand, just a moment. Christine, go right ahead, you and the chickens.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're getting, yeah. Yeah, between you and Gordon, Gordon turns down his volume, you'll be all right.
That's what I was going to suggest, so let's try it again, Christine. Well, you're, you're muted. Unmute yourself, please.
Hey, there, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask that you turn your attention to a whistleblower policy. Staff need to be assured that they have some protection in order to come forward with troubling problems within the district. My attention was turned to this recently by the spectacle of the LA City Council, where an insider who remains unidentified recorded politicians candidly saying what was on their minds, and the resulting exposure has reshaped Los Angeles politics. Insider information can be very important in addressing public issues. The public can't address issues that are not brought to public attention. Internal issues such as hostile work environment remain hidden unless someone is empowered to come forward and take the heat. A whistleblower policy is an important policy to protect the staff and to help the district function well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. Um, I see that the phone number, who I don't know who that is, also has their hand up. So let me go ahead and allow you to talk, 805, well, I probably shouldn't mention the number.
We can all see it.
Right, okay, so go right ahead, unmute yourself and speak your mind, identify yourself and where you live, by the way, also. Christine, as we know, lives in Cambria, so who's calling and who are you and where are you from?
Okay, this is Laura Schwartz Cambrian. We're traveling, we're traveling at this point, and I just wanted to say we support the standing committees, and I just wanted to let you know what number, since it was an unknown number, who's listening to the meeting. Anyhow, go for it, guys, and we applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, you and Crosby enjoy wherever you are.
He's in the dental chair.
Whoa, well, you know, that actually might be more fun than this meeting by the time it's over. We'll just have to go with that, right? Okay. So moving further, can we go ahead and approve the consent? Anybody have any comments on the consent agenda for our meeting in September? Any corrections or anything like that? If not, would someone wish to make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
I so move.
All right, Claudia, thank you. Anybody wish to second? All right.
I'll second.
All right, I'm going to assume this is a unanimous vote unless someone's voice is otherwise. Thank you. All right, so what I would like to do, if no one minds, I contacted David Pearson with regard to maybe making a comment on item 3C. So if no one minds, since he is in the audience, I'd like to make the first order of regular business, item 3C, review and discuss the status of the proposed Community Emergency Preparedness Evacuation Plan. Is, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. So let's go ahead and begin with that regular business item 3C, which, like I said, is discussing the American Emergency Preparedness Evacuation Plan. And I asked David to participate and contribute to kind of give us some feedback as to how things are pursuing in that area. Obviously, he's, well, I'll let him introduce himself, he's the Chair of the Fire Safe Focus Group, and he's involved with CAL FIRE, Cambria Fire Department, and the Healthcare District, and maybe other agencies that are involved in the evacuation plan. And he can give us a little bit of update as to how things are going. Gordon, if you would like to go ahead and make a comment first, very, well, we have two people that wish to make a public comment, including David. So let me say, Gordon, I know this is something that's your baby, so maybe in a couple of sentences, maybe you'd like to set the table here, and then I'll go to the people in public comment.
Well, that's true. The question that we have problems with is that we have a new fire chief that is responsible for being with the evacuation plan. I have yet not had the opportunity of speaking with him, so I'm assuming that David would have more information than I do, since he interviewed people with this fire chief's qualifications. So I would turn the comments over to them.
Okay, well, let me just say that wasn't quite what I expected, Gordon, because with regard to the evacuation plan, this is something that you've been pursuing and wanting to discuss. In fact, I believe we have discussed this at previous policy meetings. So I figured you would just kind of bring us up to speed as to where you're at now before we took public comment.
No, my speed is up to nothing, because we hadn't had a fire chief to find out, and David is the one that's been pushing us through with Fire Safe. So I have no new comments.
Okay, so we have two people that wish to speak on this item. It looks like Christine and David, so. David, let me, Christine, let me go to you first. Go ahead and unmute, you are unmuted, why don't I let you speak, and then David could give us more, more of an update. Oh, no, excuse me, that's Laura, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Laura.
No, I just was never unmuted, I had nothing else to say at this point, but I don't have to unmute myself.
Well, you still have your hand up.
No, I don't know how to take, how do I take it down?
Um. Right now, we won't worry about it, let me just go to, and we'll figure something out. David, thank you for your patience and your sense of humor, and go right ahead and speak.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for Chairman inviting me. I can give you all an update, and then I can answer questions following that, if that's okay. Um, per the strategic plan, there were several items that were to be pursued in conjunction with the evacuation plan and that kind of thing. An ad hoc committee was formed with Director Dean and Director.
Gray.
Gray, thank you, thank you, I always like to think of his first name, okay, and myself on it. And we've been moving along fairly well on that ad hoc information. One of the things that was worked on were brochures, new brochures to hand out on evacuation planning. There was one that is made up, ready to go for the visitors, and one that's made up and ready to go for the residents. However, they're both on hold waiting on Zone Haven, who is going to redraw the evacuation zones in Cambria. So, and I'll, and I'll talk more about Zone Haven in a minute. The second item that we were working on was identifying the residents that are in need of help in evacuating. And basically Craig Overhyde from CERT was leading that charge. And of course, the biggest issue there is we run up against HIPAA regulations, which don't allow us to, you know, know who are disabled or who are needing medication and that kind of thing. So he is currently working on that with county OES people to try to get them more information, to try to coordinate information on who in Cambria might need help and how they would get help. He's also, you know, thinking about when Zone Haven comes along, we can then better identify people neighbor to neighbor maybe, and get that done that way. The last item that Ad hoc Committee is working on is the possible new route for evacuation on the South Coast. And basically Tom Gray is leading that effort, and we are currently thinking about next steps, and we think the next step might be to re-contact those people who are on, whose property we would have to cross, and once again, talking to them a little bit more about which way to go. The other, the other item that we were going to do was we were going to broach the subject with the Coastal Commission, because obviously the Coastal Commission will have to, at some point, approve a new road, evacuation road to the south there. So those are the things that that Ad hoc Committee is working on, and they've made good progress with those things. The other items that were on that list, one is the alert system that Greg Overhyde and I have been working on. We worked on it with Chief Hollingsworth before he left. We made the application back in early April. It was to CAL OES, who screens those applications before they are sent on to FEMA. The application was basically to put erect signs around the community and have those signs, and they'll have flashy lights, and they'll have verbiage, and it says, tune your radio to AM radio station so-and-so, 610, 570, whatever, to get more information on how to evacuate properly. And we will have a radio station set up and manned at the fire station that will broadcast either canned messages, if those are appropriate, or messages as directed by the evacuation authority. There will also be sirens put up, because we know that most of the visitors to our town aren't signing up for reverse 911 for our area, so we need to have some way to alert people that they should tune to that radio station so that they can get good evacuation information, so that we don't have a lot of chitter chatter going on on the social media that is maybe false information. We can tell everybody, just go to that radio station, AM 610. You know, all cars still have AM radio installed in them, which is a good thing, so people should be able to do that and get the information. So the status of that grant is that CAL OES is still reviewing all of the applications, and supposedly by the end of September, which didn't happen, they were going to decide which ones and send them on to FEMA. So we are waiting with great anticipation to see if we are one of those that get forwarded. Basically, we asked for almost $300,000 to get this kicked off and on its way. So that's where we stand on that one. The other one that I have information on that you may not be aware of, you may, is Zone Haven. Zone Haven is a, basically a software company out of the Bay Area, and they have this software program that basically draws evacuation routes, evacuation zones, and evacuation routes for all different areas. The county put in for a grant and were successful in getting that grant to go ahead and do Zone Haven throughout the entire county that's unincorporated. So that includes Cambria. So Zone Haven is currently working away at getting the new evacuation zone set up for the entire county and the evacuation routes set up for the entire county. What this enables all the emergency responders to do is they get to look at one piece of software instead of worrying about, oh, it's Cambria, I better get that brochure out, or that map out of Cambria's evacuation zone, so that I know what zones they're talking about that need to be evacuated, etc. So that, that work is underway, and when we talked to the Director of County OES, Office of Emergency Services, Scotty Jalbert, about two weeks ago, he said that he still is hoping to get those zoned, zones settled, the software approved by all the different entities by the beginning of next year. Once that is done, then that obviously kicks off a lot of different things for us. One, we can complete those brochures that are waiting for that information. Two, we will have a better idea as to, you know, where the evacuation zones are in Cambria. We can then start to educate everyone again as to what evacuation zones everybody is in. And then finally, we can start planning possible drills to do evacuation drills for the various zones that are set up. So when we talked to Scotty Jalbert at County OES, he also stated that really his office is in charge of evacuations and also evacuation drills. Our fire chief would request those drills from County OES. He would then kind of coordinate those, because you need to have a lot of different agencies involved in doing an evacuation or an evacuation drill. Those include, you know, CAL FIRE, Cambria Fire, the sheriff, who is the one that actually is in, is in charge of directing the evacuation and getting the evacuation done, and CHP, the Highway Patrol, because those are the people that are going to be helping out with traffic if we have to evacuate, and that's very, very important. And also CAL Trans, because CAL Trans will respond, and at the urging of California Highway Patrol, will set up different evacuation routes, cones and that kind of thing, so that it would help out the evacuation. So that's basically what I know to date. We're still waiting for, you know, this Zone Haven software to be done, and then we'll know what our new evacuation zones are, etc. And I think we'll be able to move forward at that time with all of the, you know, we really got to re-educate the entire population and, you know, get out these brochures to all the hotels and, and those kind of things, so that, you know, we can best serve our community and stuff, so that's where we stand right now. I'm happy to answer any questions or fill in if I've missed anything.
All right, well, David, thank you so much for, you know, attending the meeting and giving us this update. Let me just ask you quickly, and then I know Ted has had his hand up for a while. I seem to recall when this topic was discussed, and I believe it might have been at, at a board meeting, I believe it was someone from the Healthcare District remarked on how difficult it would be to actually do, I think someone from the community had made a recommendation in public comment that we do a, a community-wide evacuation test, so to speak, a dry run. And the person from the Healthcare District commented on how difficult that would be, and I think you just pointed out how difficult that would be to coordinate all of these agencies together just to do a dry run, and in fact, I think you also remarked on, we wouldn't be doing this until Zone Haven had completed their study on the community, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, and when we met with Scotty Jalbert, he was not really keen on the idea of having a drill.
Right.
Because of the complexity, and one of the things that he pointed out was, okay, you're going to have a drill, and you've got all these tourists running around in Cambria. You know, how do you direct them properly to go here, there, everywhere? And will they go where you want them to go anyway? So, you know, he said it was going to be a little bit difficult, but, you know, give it a shot, you'll have to come to me, and we'll get the planning people together, and we'll do what we, we'll do what we can do, so.
All right, well, David, thank you so much, and so I, well, I don't see anybody in the community that wishes to comment on what you've just said, but we certainly have three members of the, our committee here that wish to speak. Ted, you had your hand up first, then I'll go to Claudia, and then Jim Townsend, so Ted, go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great, first of all, I want to, I want to commend you, David, and also Tom Gray did a presentation at the NCAC meeting, last NCAC meeting, which was quite good. What I see, and I would recommend that anybody who has a moment to go and look at Tom's presentation, it had slides and so on and so forth, it's very, very easy to follow along. Obviously, there's a lot of moving parts going on here, and, you know, clearly, we can't come up with a full, 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 full plan until a lot of those moving parts are resolved. I know that you have a person that you're talking to about drills and so on. Let me just say this, it may be, especially for the Strawberry Canyon, the area near Strawberry Canyon, it may very well be that some of these drills could come in waves, so maybe you would take that section, which is a particularly problematic section, once that road is repaired. I don't know whether you would, you would want to do it in, in some sections, and then do a full-on evacuation to see how, because I, it's, computer simulations or not, I think, I think there's, there's going to be issues that come up in an actual drill that, that will be, that will be helpful for us to be able to smooth this thing out. But you guys certainly have a lot of parts moving in the right direction, as far as I can tell. So carry on, thanks.
Yeah, Ted, thank you, by the way, I just want to correct something, I believe, that you stated regarding Strawberry Canyon and the road. The road would probably be, would most likely be off of, the Sibley Ranch.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a silly ranch. They have to, they have to get rights to it, and then the road would have to be improved, from what I understand, would have to be improved, so. That's, yeah, that's a pretty big moving part.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you so much, Ted, Claudia, go right ahead.
Claudia, you need to unmute, we can't hear you.
Sorry. David said that there are going to be sirens, and I want to know how many sirens are going to be, where will they be placed, and will they be doing like monthly checks to make sure that the sirens still siren, still make noise?
Okay, so we've tentatively picked some spots for the sirens, but we haven't had a sound engineer, you know, look at, look at the optimal places to put them. But what we, what we said for now is that we would put one on the water tanks at Stewart Street, one on the water tanks over in Limerick, and then one over in San Simeon, because obviously we need to include San Simeon in these, in this coordination, because, you know, if those people start going in the wrong direction, they could screw everything up anyway, right? So we need to have them involved also. Will that cover us? I don't know, but we got to start from that. And yes, we would, we would probably do it on a monthly basis, but it may be quarterly. We again have to coordinate all that with the Office of Emergency Services, because they also have sirens around for Diablo Canyon that they utilize and exercise every now and then, so we would have to, we'd have to coordinate all that.
So David, if I could just ask you very quickly with regard to, okay, there would be sirens, but, so let's say the sirens go off. People not, might not necessarily know, well, what is the emergency, and how should they respond?
Yeah, exactly, yes, so, so the sirens that we've chosen are very high-tech and can have different sounds that come out of them, depending upon whether it's a earthquake, whether it's a wildfire, or whether it's a tsunami, for instance. They are also capable of actually broadcasting a message, okay, like stating, you know, evacuations are underway, turn your radio to. you know, evacuations are underway, turn your radio to six ten to get up-to-date information. They can actually say that, okay? So depending upon whether we get the grant, we have a lot of work to do to do coordination, obviously, and figure out exactly how we're going to do all this. So yes, it's not going to be, you know, one, two, three. It's going to be a lot of steps to get this thing right.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, that update. That's something interesting. Verbal instructions from, from a gizmo like that. Thank you. So Claudia, did you have another question, or should I move on to Jim?
Oh, I'd like to know the decibels of the sirens.
We don't know yet. That's, that's another thing we'd have to plan on and look at, so.
All right. Thank you, Claudia. Jim, go right ahead, and then, and then Gordon, and then we have someone from the public that would wish to speak as well.
Sure. Just very briefly, David had mentioned that the HIPAA rules preclude, you know, the, the the first responder folks in town from asking people whether or not they're disabled and would need help evacuating. But I do think it might be useful and a good idea to allow, you know, to communicate to the members of the community and allow them to sort of self-identify as someone that either doesn't drive and you can not be disabled and not drive, or, you know, need assistance in evacuation. And possibly those addresses could be, you know, distributed out to the members of the CERT team that live in that particular neighborhood. And that way, there would be an opportunity for folks who are not mobile to participate in an evacuation without violating the HIPAA requirements. That, that seems to me, I mean, the folks that don't drive or are disabled, those are like the the people that are most likely to need assistance in evacuating.
Let me, let me ask you, Jim, if you don't mind, clarify for some of us that may not be aware of what you're talking about with regard to the HIPAA requirements.
Well, when you can't ask somebody if they're disabled, it's, it's, it's not, you can't legally ask somebody, are you a disabled person? But you could probably put a notice out to the community saying, if you are going to need assistance in the event of a community-wide evacuation, you know, send us your name, phone number, and address, and we'll put you on the list of people that we know need help getting the heck out of Dodge when the flames are, you know, roaring down the hill.
All right. All right, Jim. Thank you so much. Did you wish to make any further comment, or should we go on to Gordon?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gordon?
Yes, David did an excellent job of summary. As I mentioned, he would be the one to know exactly what has been developed and put in line. And he had some very good outlines of scheduling of time, so it looks like it won't be till next year before we're going to get an actual opportunity to see how this warning system will work. But the question about a drill, as I've mentioned in several other meetings, that Mill Valley does this every year as an annual drill. And so it's already been documented for the last, I don't know, probably five, six years that they've been doing it, and they learn from it every time they do it. And I'm sure Mill Valley has tourists also, have crooked roads up there, and that's why they initiated it. So there's a lot of things we could learn from what they've done already. So that's one point. And I was in Morro Bay several months ago, and actually having a picnic up there, Delmar Park. And this big screaming siren went off, and I thought things were coming unglued here. But it was a test of their system. And they also have the capability of putting these in their police vehicles, that they can actually drive around and have also access to the PA system for different areas, and not just located on a a pole someplace. So they have additional mobility. That sounds like it would be good for beach areas or other populous places that we could look at as other opportunities. And you left off the CERTs as a participant in your list that CERTs plays a big role in Mill Valley to help direct traffic, because usually don't have enough military or police persons to direct, as you say, a lot of traffic to know where they're going. And that would be a point of interest is that Road for the South, it's been mentioned several times, but it's nice to know that someone is now looking into actually trying to move forward on that opportunity to move people out of the lodge hill area. So great jobs and look forward to having all this come together in first part of next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon. So let me see, I don't see anyone else in the group with their hand up. So let me go to Christine Heinrich. Christine, you wish to make a comment again, so go ahead and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you, Dave, for that presentation. The, all the objections that you have to the idea of having a drill, an evacuation drill, seem to me to be actually arguments in favor of having one. The fact that we have tourists who will be confused, you know, if we actually have to evacuate, those things are all going to be true. And it would be well if we have a practice in advance and get some ideas of how to handle this. In the Midwest, a lot of communities have tornado drills, and there's no question that they save lives. So I, I think that this is really something that other communities do. We can certainly do it, and we, we can learn from, from trying. I, I think this is, should actually be a priority. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Christine.
All right, Harry, I've got to run to another webinar, so if there are no other questions for me, I'm going to go ahead and sign off.
David, thank you so very much for attending and for your very thorough.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so we still have four members of the public in attendance here. So with regard to this particular item that we have here on the agenda. So this has been, I think, a fairly productive discussion. That's what we were doing, reviewing, discussing the status of the emergency preparedness evacuation plan as per, you know, CSDA policy 2300. I don't know if anybody else, anybody has any recommendations in this regard with regard to how we move forward as a policy committee in recommending a needs assessment for this, but I think my personal feeling is we probably need to hold off a little more until this particular process moves forward with regards to the various agencies that, and also the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee moves forward as well. How does everybody else feel about that?
I was going to make the same suggestion, Harry.
All right. Thank you, Ted. And I saw Jim shaking as well, and as well as Deborah. So Claudia, are you and Gordon okay with what I just stated? All right. Gordon actually gave me a thumb up. Cool. And so thank you so much for us having this discussion here. So let's, let's move on now to excuse me, to our next agenda item, which would be going back to a regular business item A, discuss and reconsider the needs assessment for a district code of ethics policy. And Mr. Townsend has followed up on with regard to various CSD, excuse me, various special districts with regard to how many of them actually do have a code of ethics policy. So I know you've been following, like I said, following up on this, Jim, so can you, you give us a report on what your findings are?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Harry. I was tasked with communicating with the California Special Districts Association regarding how common it was for a CSD to have an adopted code of ethics. Pursuant to that, I communicated with Neil McCormick, who's the executive director of the California Special Districts Association. He informed me that he did not have an exact number of CSDs that had an adopted code of ethics, but that he had felt that it was standard practice and almost every CSD did. He further mentioned that the CSDA thought that having a code of ethics was so important that they included that as a requirement in the application for the district transparency certificate of excellence, which of course, CCSD was awarded in 2021. And I thought that was, that was unusual. So I did a little bit more digging in that. And the, the actual application, which is kind of a checklist with a bunch of supporting material, the actual application for the district transparency certificate of excellence states under other policies, have current policies addressing the following areas. And one of those areas is code of ethics/values/norms or board conduct. That's how it's stated in the, in the application. On the CCSD website, when you go to the transparency tab, it kind of lists all of those same requirements that are on the application. And under code of ethics or conduct policy, it just links back to the board of directors. It doesn't link to any policy or any statement or any code of ethics, because there is no adopted code of ethics here. It just links back to the bios and the contact information for the, for the board of, for the board of directors. If, I did a little bit more digging. And under the mission statement for the agency, for CCSD, it does give a listing of, of what's described as core values, which may circle back to the values that was included in the checklist item. I know this is confusing. I'm sorry, it was confusing to me, too. So it's entirely possible that the information that was forwarded to the Special District Leadership Foundation, which is really an adjunct of the association, they have the same address in Sacramento, might have been that information, the, the values contained in the, in the district's mission statement. My suggestion to clarify this would be that Director Farmer requests that the general manager provide this committee with a copy of the documentation that was forwarded to the Special Districts Leadership Foundation as part of the application for the certificate of excellence. And that would that would resolve that, that question as to what exactly CCSD gave to the the Leadership Foundation in lieu of an adopted code of ethics, which the district does not have. I don't see this as being any sort of like big issue of skullduggery or anything. It would just clarify how the district was able to secure the certificate of transparency, a certificate of excellence and transparency, without having adopted code of ethics, when the executive director of the CSDA said having an adopted code of ethics was a requirement to obtain that certificate. So we could hopefully get some clarity on that and move forward from there. Regardless of what was included in the application, Mr. McCormick was very clear that, that they considered to be, they considered having an adopted code of ethics, pretty much standard best practices for any, any CSD. And I'm happy to forward the email I received from Mr. McCormick to anybody who would, who would like to see it that hasn't received it from me already. That's my report. And I guess my request.
That, that sounds like a very, a very thorough, and I think much appreciated by the members of this committee, as well as the people in the public. You did a great job there, Jim. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I think all of us would like to say, no, there was no skullduggery involved. It's just that, you know, folks at the district wanted to have something very pleasant, acknowledging the, what the district has accomplished. And there was an oversight on both sides, whether it was the district or the CSDA, with regard to the lack of a code of ethics policy.
Well, Harry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't think we can, I don't think we can conclude that there was an oversight until we see the documentation that was provided to address that part of the application.
Okay. So I think you're
That's my opinion.
Right. Your suggestion was, I, as a member of the board, request to see the documentation that was forwarded to CSDA that allowed for the transparency award, correct?
Yes, specifically for the item regarding code of ethics, values, norms, or board conduct. I mean, it would save, you know, members of the public like myself from having to submit a public records request for that particular item.
Ted, do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, first of all, Jim.
And then, and then Deborah. I didn't see Deborah's hand up, so go right ahead.
If David was prior to me, that's fine.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, Jim, thanks for all this great work. This is an eye-opener for sure. I think that what we are trying to do is to establish a needs assessment for an ethics policy to present to the board. And all of this information certainly needs to be included in, in that needs assessment. And in terms of getting to the bottom of, of, you know, the transparency award, that seems to me to be, you know, a real item between the board and the CSDA organization. We, we, we seem to have uncovered something here that requires some consideration on our part. But I really think overall, the, the really overarching thing that, you know, that's been discovered here in that we have been attempting to place our handbook platform on top of the CSDA structure is that this gentleman is suggesting that the code of ethics is pretty much normal business practice, which is something I know that we have expressed it at other times. And so I would say that even at this point, we are prepared to submit a, a needs assessment to the board regarding the ethics policy and let the, let the board finally come to a conclusion as to whether they want one or whether they don't, and whether they want us to work on it, or whether they want to work on it themselves and then have it, you know, run through the pieces with us. Don't care, but I think we, I think we probably are ready to submit, you know, enough information for an initial needs assessment at this point. So thank you very much, Jim, again.
Right. Thank you, Ted. Thank you for your comments. Deborah, go right ahead.
I, I agree with Ted to a certain point. Because I, I think the statement that we got from Mr. McCormick is really the basis for the needs assessment. And we use his letter as the documentation for the needs assessment. I, I think, you know, we just do a cover letter on that and, and then forward that to the board.
Right. Yeah.
That makes sense to everyone. I could do a motion if you want. Okay, so I okay, my motion is, I move that we utilize the letter that is from Mr. McCormick from this, the SDLF or the CSDA that says that it is best practice for CSDs to have ethics policy. And that we, we utilize that as, with a cover letter to the board. Labeling it as the documentation for the needs assessment.
Okay. So let me just say this much, Deborah. Guinness, you are the committee secretary, writing all of that information down?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I think we can kind of conclude that you will be, how can we condensing that statement that you just made? If all of us understand the motion that you made. If all of us understand the motion that you made. And Jim, you have your hand up.
Harry, I would, I I since I'm the one who initiated the communication with the CSDA, I would certainly volunteer to draft a cover letter and attach that to Mr. McCormick's communication to me. I would direct that to you as chair of this committee, and then you could forward it to the board of directors.
I think that's pretty awesome. Are you also, I see Claudia has her hand up, but are you willing to second Deborah's motion as well?
I mean, I need to second this before you can have this discussion.
Okay, sorry. Claudia's gonna second it, and then we'll have that same discussion.
Thank you so much, Claudia. Looks like ladies rule here for a moment. So go right.
As usual. So we can we can pretend this is a quantum week episode and that the discussion we just had prior to the motion has been advanced through time to after the motion.
Amen. I second that.
So thank you. Thank you all. And Ted is laughing. Deborah, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I do have one more, one more question. And I think what Jim is is recommending that we do as far as asking for the documentation, I think that should be separate from the needs assessment, but I think that is a really good idea. So how do you want to handle that? Do you want a motion about that? Or what? How do you want to handle it?
The committee could make a motion requesting that the chair of the committee, Director Farmer, request the supporting documentation for the code of ethics, values, norms, or board conduct policy included in the district transparency certificate of excellence application. And I'll and I'll make that a motion. Request from the general manager, who appears to be listening in on this call.
Can't do what you just did, but because we have we have a motion on the floor in a second, and you just motion. So you really probably since they they aren't related or they aren't going to be, we're not making a motion that would supersede the motion we have on the floor. It would be better if we concluded with this motion before we
Let's vote on the motion and then we'll address the information.
A good idea. Okay.
Okay, so very briefly, Deborah.
Yes.
Repeat your motion again.
I move that Jim Townsend write a cover letter for just a minute. That Jim write a covered letter for the letter that he received from Mr. From Mr. Just a minute. Okay, this is my husband's phone. Mine is turned off. I that Jim write a cover letter for the letter that was received from Mr. McCormick stating the need for or the importance of a ethics slash values policy as best practices for special this best special community, special districts.
All right. Thank you, Deborah. And Jim, I believe you. No, Claudia has seconded that.
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have a unanimous vote here just by a raise of hands? Well, actually, why don't I just do it the official way? Mr. Townsend, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Key, yourself?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Gordon Heinrichs. I need I need a verbal here just. Well, okay, I'm I'm gonna answer for Gordon.
Yes.
All right, there we go. Thank you, Gordon. All right. So then we had a second motion from, I believe it was from Jim.
Yes, I I let's see, I move that the policy committee request Chair Farmer to communicate with the general manager and secure the supporting documentation under the district transparency certificate of excellence application that relates to other policies, code of ethics, values, norms, or board conduct. To be clear, we'd we'd like to see what was submitted to the CSDA or the special district leadership foundation to to support that that item on the application.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Jim.
And then and then the board can decide whether that is sufficient. You know, sufficiently covers their ethics concerns or our ethics concerns, or whether they would like to adopt a formal code of ethics like almost every other CSA in the in the CSA, Community Supported Agriculture, CSD in the state.
All right. Thank you so much, Jim.
That's my motion. I can't I can't second it, I don't think.
I did. I second it.
All right. So the motion was made by Jim and seconded by Deborah. Pardon the informality here. So do I have a raise of hands to make this unanimous? Thank you. We're passing on the verbal approval. Thank you very much. So let's, so that was a unanimous vote for Jim's motion. Now moving on to item B. Continue to review, discuss, and consider and consider the CCSD policy checklist. So have, hopefully, we've all had the opportunity to go through the checklist and see if there are any that that see what what any of us might feel needs to be addressed or needs requires a needs assessment for the policy committee and the board. So does anybody have any? Deborah, I see your hand up. It looks like Ted, you have your hand up as well, as well as Claudia. So thank you all for for wishing to participate in this item. So Ted, why don't you go first?
Hey, listen, I'm looking at this at the checklist and then the expanded explanation for all these, and it's really very good. But I do need some clarification here on the matrix. Here, there's on the and and I like the I like the the abbreviated checklist quite a bit here. No action, staff review, board review. What what exactly, you know, if you could clarify for those, if no, so is no action? That means that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the board has reviewed the policy and they have determined that they're that what they either what they have or what has been submitted is 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 okay, and we're good with that one. So all the no action ones are basically sort of done deal if I if I can understand that. Staff review means to me, anyway, that the staff is undergoing its analysis of the of the individual policy and either has not returned to us or a decision has not been made. And that certainly is a very large number of of these policies. And so, you know, a staff review would mean that after a staff review, either the policy would go to the board or would go through the policy standing committee for evaluation. Not exactly sure there. And then board review. Well, does that mean that the board is continuing to review either a policy that was that had received staff review analysis or had received a policy submitted by the policy standing committee? If 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 those are the correct interpretations of these matrices, I would appreciate any enlightenment on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. Before I make a comment on what you just said, both Deborah and Claudia wish to comment as well. Deborah, why don't you go ahead first?
Okay, well, my question is even more primitive than Ted's. So what I'm thinking Yeah, so what I want to know is what is the first list, policy handbook chest, where what is what is that? Where did it come from? And what do each of these three columns mean? Then my second question is the CCSD policy inventory. Where does that come from? And what do each of these columns mean? So I I don't know where to start with this. I read them twice. So I just need to know, what are we doing here?
Well, you know, other members of the board and public have been asking that question for quite a while now. What are we doing here? So let me just make a comment that with regard to the policy handbook checklist and the, let's see, the more extensive evaluation that followed. I believe that the extension, extensive evaluation that followed was a result of a an ad hoc committee consisting of now board president on Hal as well as Tom Gray. They're the ones that came up with this information. And at that time, Don was actually the chair of the policy committee. Of course, he had to leave that post when he became board president. I hope that answers the question to some to some degree. Do you have something further, Deborah?
Yeah, just where did the first one, policy handbook checklist? Where did that come from?
You know, I'm not necessarily sure. And
That was, I believe that was an outgrowth from the from the original work that they did. I think that they wanted to abbreviate it.
Right, I think you're you're, I believe you're correct. Of course, President Hal isn't in the audience, but as a board member, he's not allowed to speak, but hopefully we're correct. He'll he'll let he'll let me know. But thank you, Ted. And we still have about twenty minutes to be able to attend the meeting. So thank you, Claudia.
Yeah, thank you. I I think I remembered this document having more information. And I just I I just thought it. I didn't see the document till today when I picked it up, so I I don't have anything to compare it to. But what this doesn't say is what we did. And I mean, it talks about if there was action. And it talks about if the staff reviewed it, and it talks about the board board review. It talks about whether or not it was adopted or not, but it doesn't say what was in process. It doesn't. We used to have a a list that had what was in process and what level. And Don did an incredible job of creating that document. She bet he can't talk because he's probably going, yeah, 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 you know, I did that. But I think when Tom and and Don put this together, they they took all that out. And so this is why this this document's confusing is because there's there isn't any information as to what we were doing, what what we, what stage we were in. Had we reviewed it? Were we waiting for a response back or all that stuff, which is what we need in order to to do our job? So we needed to to get that document and maybe at the next meeting and so that we can really see where we were with all these things. And I can't off the top of my head, you know, remember all these. Some things do have actions, so we can see that. But other things, we were working on a lot of things that just never quite got finished. And I'd like to go back and finish what we, I guess now we don't, we can't write the policy, but we can make a needs assessment whether or not a policy needs to be written. So but you can't do that with this document because you can't tell what's what's going on. So
Right. So let me just ask you, Claudia, did you come prepared to maybe make a comment or bring to our attention some of the policies that maybe that some some of the items that actually need a policy or maybe an update on the policy? Or should that that's something you're saying we need to pursue in the future, maybe at the next meeting?
A little bit like like Deborah, I need to know what staff review means. It means that what staff? Does that mean the CCSD staff? They looked at it. Okay. And then no action means that no board action? Or does that mean no action by the policy committee? I mean, it just says act, it says no action under, let's say, ten twenty-five claims against the district. And yet over here it says policy adopted. So I am confused. So
And you know, I think I owe us all an apology because I spent considerable time talking with Board President Hal this morning trying to get some clarification on this item and other items. And I don't feel that I got sufficient amount of information that's totally on me. So I could give you folks feedback on any question or concern that you might have. So my apologies for that.
If I could.
Sure, Ted.
Oh, I would like to, I I don't know if this is a something that we would move, but I would like to move that for the next meeting or I don't know where we are in this meeting, but I I really think what we need to do is first clarify what these three columns mean so that everybody's on the same page. And I would propose as a result of what Claudia has suggested here, one more column that would be policy standing committee consideration or policy, you know, policy committee action or no action. Just so that we would also have a clear idea, as Claudia suggested, what has been accomplished and what still needs to be accomplished and so on. So I I think I think that this matrix is is very good. But I but I'm afraid I'm a bit confused as to you know, what the reality is with with this matrix. And I would like to expand it to include something about, you know, what what has the policy committee, you know, approached or
If we've taken some kind of action or had a discussion, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, was the policy committee even involved?
Right. Some people have better memories than others. So it could very easily be that we actually did discuss something and no one necessarily recalls exactly what, you know, what took place. So
Well, my my suspicion is, yeah, my suspicion is that Director Hal may very well be the best resource on that since since I know he spent considerable time going through all this. And I and I'm quite sure that he could probably answer those questions or may even have another, you know, set of documents that has all that information on it, and we can compile it together and 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 get back on this thing and 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 determine whether or not we have done, well, one of the things that we really wanted to do, which was to make sure that the handbook, you know, was was in order and and responded properly to the the CSDA framework.
Well, thank you so much, Ted. I've been watching Claudia's facial expression. She has her hands up. But her facial expression has some disgust to it because I'm not getting to her quickly enough. So
Well, I'm trying I'm trying to tell you that and poor Donnie's in the background going, I did all this stuff. Don created a document that had all that information in there. And when he and Tom made this document, all that stuff, you know, most of that stuff went away. So we were all sent that document. I I'd have to go look it up. Maybe if you could just ask, make a motion to ask Don to send it to us again so that I don't have to go searching around trying to find it. But there was a beautiful document. It was an incredible. It is very hard to print it because it's
Very extensive.
I'm not I'm not really good with with
Eight by eleven. It's more like eleven by seventeen, so to speak.
That's right. It's it's eleven. It's a it's it's either legal size or eleven by fourteen, and it's in landscape mode. So you'd have to put the right paper in your copy machine, you know, to print it out.
Right.
It really works better if you have it on a computer because you can see the multiple levels of it. And yeah, probably print it out, but it would be, it might be confusing to do. Anyway, it looks, it works better if you look at it on a computer because it has these different levels of you know, of information, and it is very, very detailed. And Deborah's trying to talk, but her voice is not being heard. So.
I didn't see Deborah's hand up.
Her mouth is moving, but she's not. Oh, oh, she didn't want to talk. Okay. Well, so anyway, what I, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, asked Don Howe or asked Harry if he would ask Don if he could send that document to us again. I'm sure he has it at his fingertips. And, and then we can look at that then before the next meeting and, and take a look at it electronically. Because I think, you know, because when you start spreading it out, it starts to get really complicated, but if you can keep it in electronic version of it, you can see all the different la- levels of what we did, all the work we put into different, these different policies. And this, and I also have a question about what is CSD style number? What's a style number? I don't know. That's when, when you talk to Don, ask him what a style number is, I guess it just means it's the stock number, but they call it style. So not stock number, but the item number. And then, and then there's a document date. Is that document date the date that it was looked at? The date that it was adopted, the date that it was, with, I don't understand the date. So, so we could clarify that and then send us the other. If we have the other document, we'll be able to clarify all of this because you'll be able to look at all the details.
A- a- and in addition to what Claudia is suggesting here, some level of explanation as to what all these matrices actually mean. You know, i- i- in this document, and if it's submitted to us electronically, that's great. No problem. I'm happy to put the right paper in my machine and, and print it out. That's on me. So submitted electronically, submitted in paper, could care less, but we, but in addition to, to getting back in touch with all of that information, clarity on just what exactly these matrices mean is absolutely imperative for us to make this working document work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, Claudia.
I actually made a motion and it kind of got ignored. So.
Well, it didn't, didn't necessarily get ignored.
But we didn't get a second, so I didn't know if it was dead because of lack of second.
Well, I think the, the, the motion was for me to request from President Howe, if I'm not mistaken, that he provide an electronic version of the larger version of the, of the checklist, correct?
Yes.
Well, and that's.
Yes, Ted.
And that's why I wanted to.
Clarification of either, either you do it, Harry, or Don can do it, but, but, you know, beginning this whole meeting was, I was like, okay, so what does no action, staff review and board review actually mean to us? That's just three, that's just three of them. Clearly, you know, as Claudia has also pointed out, there's some other ambiguities or things that aren't totally clear. You know, with Don's submission. So in addition to what her motion is, which I approve of, would be some clarification as to matrices and definition. Now, you can do that yourself, Harry. You can include it in the motion. I don't care. But we're not going to be able to move forward, I don't think, all that effectively until we really understand what these, what these designations mean.
Okay, so we're asking.
At least I won't be able to.
The motion then we're asking here if he would be willing to ask Don for the document, the spreadsheet.
Can't hear you, Claudia.
I can, we can, we can hear.
So the motion is to add, is to ask Harry if he would request the document from Don Howe with exclamations, exclamations of the, the various columns in each of these documents so that we can, to clarify the documents for us.
Right.
And so we need.
I, I can't hear what Claudia said.
I second it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you saying that you can't hear anything that anybody's saying or just Claudia? Ted? Apparently Ted can't hear any of us.
Uh, no, I, I came back line for some reason or other. I got muted. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so you say you can't hear it. Can you hear me?
I can, I can hear now. Would you repeat the motion, please?
Deborah, would you be willing to do that since you just wrote it down?
Sure. Um, the motion is to direct the Chair Farmer, Harry Farmer, to ask the President Don Howe about, to ask him to send us the full document electronically. In addition to, to have a definition or explanation about what the matrices mean and an explanation of the columns.
All right. Um, I think that's, that's certainly satisfactory. Um, so thank you, Deborah. So I believe, yes, Gordon, go right ahead.
Now, as part of the discussion, one might include an invitation to Don to come to our meeting. I think he is authorized to do that as a guest and help explain that if you wanted to have one person to start that with.
Okay, well, let me say this, you know, Don is in the audience. So he knows what's happening right now with regard to our discussion. And as a guest, since he won't be serving on the Board come December, he can certainly be our guest at that time if we're patient enough to wait until then. We shall see. Yes, go right ahead, Claudia.
Um, is it possible for you to step down for a few minutes so he could speak?
Um, for him to step down?
No, would it be possible for you to turn your, to turn off your, 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 your visual and your sound and allow Don to speak? And that way we wouldn't have a conflict of having two directors on at the same time?
Just a, a quick time check. We have about 10 minutes left before several of us need to leave the meeting. Just FYI.
I, I don't know if we can do that. It's like me leaving the room, so to speak, so somebody else can speak. Is that what I'm talking about?
I, 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 I think you're going without, without, without legal advice here, I would say no.
Yeah. I, I don't feel terribly comfortable about doing this.
Chair Farmer, could we vote on that motion, please?
Right, let's move us along.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I don't know who made that suggestion, but we have forgotten. So let's let's go ahead and vote on the motion. And I believe we have that and we did have a second, correct? Was that you, Ted?
It was me.
That was Deborah.
Okay, Ted made the motion. Deborah seconded it. So.
Claudia made the motion.
My apologies. But yeah, I'm sure anybody can understand why my, I may be getting confused. Why you made the motion and Deborah seconded it. So once again, the ladies are ruling this meeting. But don't forget, I am the Chair.
Yeah.
For what that's worth, right? So let's just have a, a verbal, a verbal vote here with the rest of us here. So Ted?
I.
Jim?
I.
Gordon?
I.
Deborah?
I.
Claudia?
I.
All right, thank you. So it's 4:24. Any future agenda items?
Well, I'd like to do this, I'd like to bring the, the the ethics policy back again to, and, and also bring back this, the policy checklist. So.
Yeah. May I say, may I say, I agree. I think both of those items are ongoing items that we should, we should really keep, continue to sink our teeth in until we reach, reach some closure. Yeah.
And, and we may want to add on to the agenda for the next meeting, the results of Director Farmer's information request regarding the Code of Ethics portion of the Transparency Certificate application to, from the General Manager. What'd you get?
And I would also like to request from the Board if there's anything in, anything you know, outstanding before, you know, we have a, a change in, in leadership, if there was anything outstanding that they really feel like it's important for the Standing Committee to, to address. And, you know, just for, for things that, that, you know, for, for their feedback towards us, that would be great.
All right. Thanks very much. Um, I think overall, despite the awkwardness in the beginning, we had a very nice presentation from, from David Pearson. I think I had a following discussion and discussions on the other two items. So overall, I'd like to think that this is a fairly successful meeting. I guess we'll find out from Mr. Calder Woodman. He, he writes his summary of the meeting. And I want to thank Crosby and Laura for attending, President Howe for attending, and also Christine Heinrichs, Christine Heinrichs as well. So everybody, thanks for your participation. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being quality members of this particular for this particular committee. And I wish you all the best. Have a wonderful weekend. Have a wonderful month, so to speak, until we meet again on December 1st and, and enjoy the weather.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Many blessings. Bye bye.